Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the planning board. Is this working? Can you all hear me? Okay. Welcome to the planning board meeting of Tuesday, May 23 at 7:02 PM. If we could all rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, for liberty and justice for all.
Oh, I'll remind them. There is a sign in sheet for anybody that would like to sign in at the front of the room there. Our first order of business is on the application of Matthew Modine requesting a special permit pursuant to sections 5300 and 2230 of the Carver zoning bylaw located at 309 Trentmont Street, Unit 1 in Carver to operate a retail store and a service motocross dirt bikes and service motocross dirt bikes, ATVs, street bikes, Harleys, snowmobiles, jet skis, and UTVs, repair shop, and a general business district. Good evening, gentlemen.
You doing?
Mr. Malone and Mr. Malone, I believe.
No, so I'm the owner of the business.
Okay, excellent.
My name is Jamie Emerson, 309 Trentmont Street, and this is Matt below in the applicant.
Excellent.
So I'm just here today because obviously business owners don't do this every day and just to kind of help you guys with some of his paperwork and any questions that I can help with. If you want to pass out the smokes. Yep. So if you want, I'll kind of give you a rundown.
Please.
Okay.
Excellent. Thank you very much.
So Unit 1 came up for rent two months ago, and Matt showed up, and under what he wants to do, he needed a special permit.
Yes.
So he did have to try and secure it.
Thank you, Matt.
He did have to start the lease, and has been paying for it for about 60 days now. Otherwise, he would have lost the unit.
Yes.
To someone else. I think we've provided a letter of the basics of what he's doing, a small engine repair, a small-scale situation. And we reached out to Jesse from the fire department, and the same building he's approved before, and he had all the details and wrote a letter based on what we're doing. We were in the guidelines. We sat down and talked with Rod. The building inspector told him everything we were doing, supplied him all the information, and he was okay with everything. It's just, of course, you know, have to come in front of the board. And we just wanted to, you know, any questions that we can answer or Matt. Hopefully, this is within reason of the special permit, and we'd love to just welcome him as a business.
Agreed. Is this a Craftsman-Tradesman building?
So when we originally built this building compared to different ones, you know, when we were doing the permit, they wanted to call it something. We built ours out more like a retail. If you're familiar with the building, if you go over there, a lot of them are just garage bays that they build. We built out retail storefront in the front of it, all glass windows. We didn't build out like a contractor bay.
Okay.
So we have a mix of different businesses in there that use it for that, like the storefront. And, you know, we did have an auto repair place permitted before, and Kevin was on the board at the time. Unfortunately, it was the same exact thing, but COVID put them out of business. And at that time, that different building inspector agreed with everything they used, and we put all the tight tanks in. Every bay is pitched at the end of the bay for the floor drains. Matt's over-prepared here. He's got his oil report for the company to come and take his waste oil. He's got his, you know, you could speak to it, but...
So we have the insurance already in place, the dealer accounts, the oil setup, the account with Western Oil to come and get the waste oil, fuel, antifreeze, et cetera. We have a layout basically ready to go. Most of the equipment is already on hand, ready to be put in. We just have to get the permit.
Excellent. Now, you will need a second permit, too, one from the select board, because technically you're an automotive repair shop. So you're under a special permit for us for the use of the building, and they will require you to be licensed through approval process through them. I don't think it's onerous, but I've never been through it, so... We are going to require, because of your location so close to the wetlands, that secondary containment units, should this be approved, be placed under all of the your waste containers, the oil, the gas, and the antifreeze. We will not allow the storage of hazardous waste in the 100-foot zone, which would include tires, junk parts, or vehicles that contain oil or various other substances in regards to that.
Okay.
And what are we looking at for parking of vehicles for repair and such?
So all we're gonna do is, all we're doing is jet skis, dirt bikes, ATVs, UTVs. We're not doing any automotive vehicles.
Right, right.
Cars, but unfortunately, that's kind of the category that it gets put into. There's two parking spots out front of the retail office. There's, is it three or four on the side of the building?
There's two in the front, there's three of them in the rear of the unit, and then this particular unit that he's taken has four going down the side of the building. And then we have about maybe five to seven different, you know, outside parking spots on the outskirts of the building.
Okay.
Most of his business is gonna be, I'm dropping off my motorcycle. I'll pick it up tomorrow and pick it up and go.
Right. Well, we'll have concerns that vehicles under repair aren't piled up anywhere or, you know, that they should be...
Yeah, no problem.
So like as the owner, you know, when he first came along, and this is for the rest of the people in the building, too, we're not looking to run a junkyard. We don't even allow people to have stuff like that outside.
Excellent.
We keep it clean, and when they, when honestly, like if a landscaper comes, we say, "This isn't for you," because you're gonna have stuff all over the place everywhere, and we're just not looking for that. What he does, everything's gonna, he would never leave a, he'd never leave a customer bike outside. It's all gonna be within the unit, so it seems to be a good fit.
Excellent. And it's one tight tank for the entire complex?
It's five manifolded into one. Yep.
Okay. And what are your, what are the, are there other businesses in there that should...
There are not.
...a spill happen or anything that...
Oh, no. We've never had any kind of spill or anything, but nobody is using it like for that use.
Okay. Because incompatible chemicals mixing in a tight tank like that could lead to a dangerous situation.
Yep.
All right.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, please.
I have a few questions for you. So Jamie, I know you set it up, there's a crane service in there, right?
There is, yeah.
He does have adequate trailer maneuverability for dropping off vehicles?
The crane?
Because he's gonna have trailers coming in to drop off?
Yeah, so he's got those same spots. Everybody's got them same three spots in the back of the bay, which is like 26 feet each bay in the back. And, you know, Nick is used to, Nick is used to getting into some tight spaces, and the building's always been full, and there's cars around, and he gets that, backs that thing right in there, no problem.
That's good.
Yep. And as far as like...
One second, Kevin.
What's that?
One second. I, when I read this out, it is, it is a public hearing. I wanted to make sure everybody was aware that this is a public hearing and it's not, because I didn't read it like I read it, I didn't announce it as a public hearing. So excuse me. I'm sorry for interrupting.
No problem.
And as far as the board of health is concerned, on the oil pickup, what is the schedule gonna be?
So the oil will be picked up as soon as the barrels get close to being full. I think you're only allowed, like oil, you're only, I think it's under, I wanna say it's under 60 gallons.
Okay.
The tanks that we're using are 55-gallon drums each. So probably when they get close, 40, 45 gallons, I'll call and have it picked up. I don't ever want the tank to get too full.
Right.
Just to give yourself that wiggle room on the top of the tank, you know?
Okay, good. And then, of course, the other thing is, what's gonna be your policy on picking up a bike? You know, bike, ATV, jet ski. Say you fix it.
Yeah.
Do you have a policy as far as, you know, expecting somebody to come and get it?
When they come and get it? Yeah, so I gotta sit down with the lawyer and have them draw up like a proposal. Obviously, if someone brings a bike in, they're gonna have to sign this stating, you know, they haven't taken their bike, you know, within X amount of days, and you can pick it up. If you don't, at that point, it's gonna be storage fees like any other shop, you know?
Okay.
Because now it's taking up space, and I could just be working on someone else's machine, unfortunately.
Of course.
Are you speaking more on the loading of it, Kevin? Or was that what you were...
I was talking, the loading was more or less the maneuverability of the trailer, getting it in and out of there.
Yep.
And the picking up of it, you know?
Yep.
Let's say somebody, it's, it's not really on him if somebody doesn't pick it up, but, you know, what are we gonna do when we have a vehicle?
Yeah.
You know, that's in the lot that doesn't get picked up? You know, I don't want that to become, you know, an issue.
Right.
Over time.
Yep.
I understand that he's doing everything he can, you know, on his end to make sure that it gets picked up after it's repaired.
Yep.
Let's hope that somebody wants it, but, you know, there might be somebody that might not pick something up, and we don't wanna end up having vehicles and equipment just hanging on the side.
Usually, people are pretty good about that, because like, I mean, there's the racetrack in Middleborough, Cape Way, and like, a lot of people race. So like, they're bringing their bike and they want it done ASAP. They don't wanna be missing a race coming up that weekend. So like, I understand people do run into financial issues. We all have bills, things pop up randomly, but people, I feel like people are pretty good about picking up their stuff. But again, if a situation was that, like that was to occur, then they would have to stop paying storage fees at that point.
Okay. I just wanna make sure that, you know, that they understand from you that there's not gonna be, you're not gonna have the ability to store their vehicles.
Right, right, right.
You know, so they're gonna have to come and get it, or it's gonna have to be removed, you know? They're just not gonna be able to set inside.
Yep.
You know, Jamie, I know you do a class act, and everything that you've put in this town has been beautiful.
Trying to.
Wanna continue to keep that up and keep everything working?
I can promise you this, that this whole board could drive by, and it won't take you guys, it'll be me. There's gonna be, there's gonna be no junkyard in my property.
Yep. Nope, got it.
And I'm right up front with the client before they even sign the lease.
No, it's good to take care of this right off the bat.
Yeah.
You know, make sure that things aren't storming up.
Yep.
You know? All right. Those are my questions, Connie.
Thank you, Kevin.
May I?
Please.
So can you explain to me, like, what are you gonna do with the vehicles if you order parts and they're two months out? Where are you gonna store these? Don't say it doesn't. My brother has a snowmobile, two months for a part, out of their control.
So I do have a 20-by-20 storage unit in Lakeville. So if it came to something like that, I mean, and I had to do something with the machine, I could bring it to my storage unit and get it out of the way. I don't want things sitting around, you know? Again, it's just taking up space, and unfortunately, that kind of puts me back on being able to take somebody else's bike, where I can get the stuff right away. But, I mean, we do have the dealer account, there's other ways to get parts, there's different spots like Amazon, eBay, MotoSport, there's a lot of different options for parts.
I do understand that.
I'm just saying, absolutely.
I mean, I do a lot of snowmobiles.
Yeah, yeah.
Bike, they go in the shop every year.
Yeah.
And, you know, supply and demand is not there. You know, the demand's there, but the supply's not.
Right.
You know, like I said, had a snowmobile in there for two months. You know, you get three, four of them sitting there waiting for parts. I'm just looking at, you know, what are you gonna do if you got them sitting there and you're just taking more on time to keep your business going? That's all.
Right, 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 right.
And like you said, there's Amazon and stuff, but, you know, when you got a brand-new snowmobile and you need a part, you're not gonna put an Ozon part in that just to get it out the door, are you?
Absolutely not. No, no, no. We don't do things that way. If it came to a situation like that where I couldn't get the parts, I mean, I would have to call the customer, like, you know, we're two months out, I can't keep this and store this machine for two months, unfortunately. They could pay, they could put the money down for the parts, and we could order them for them, no problem. When they come in, they could bring it back, and we would service it. It's kind of the only thing you can really do.
No, I understand. I'm an active snowmobiler, that's why I'm asking, because, you know, you know, every two years, you usually get your engine overhauled and stuff, and there's parts you need, you know?
Right, right.
And in the past couple of years, they just haven't been available, you know? And I don't know about dirt bikes or anything, you know, because I don't use those.
Dirt bikes are pretty good. You can do stuff like the next day, if not two days.
You know, I'm just, yeah, experienced, that's all.
Absolutely. I understand.
Somebody else?
Sure. So a couple of questions with regards to some of the repair side of things. Talking about, you were talking about as far as like repairing, doing fork rebuilds and different things like that. Are you gonna be, if it's required, are you gonna be able to? Are you gonna be doing any like chrome, re-chroming of anything?
That's a crazy process to do that. We have companies we can send it out to, diamond-like carbon is the coating they use, different anodizing, different chroming, we have companies. The only thing we'll be doing is like re-valving, which is different shims, spring, you know, swapping out springs, doing oil, fork seals. We do have a nitrogen setup, which is a small tank if you need to charge shocks, et cetera. Engine rebuilding, crank balancing, cylinder head seat cutting, we have all the machines to cut seats.
So will you be doing like sonic washing, any type of sandblasting or anything else like that for...
No, no. We have companies for that. I'll just send it out. It's too dirty, it's too messy, it takes up too much space for those machines.
Yep. Yeah, that was, that was my, that was my question with regards, referring back to Mr. Shea's comment about incompatible chemicals mixing together into the...
Right.
Into the tanks and stuff like that, yeah. All right.
Sounds like you've been in the business for a while.
Uh, yeah, 20 years. I've been doing it for 20 years. I worked at a different, bunch of different shops. It's just time to do it on my own. You know, it's tough working on the people.
Yep.
Now's a good opportunity for you to put a plug in, get it out there.
Right.
People to hear you, kind of like opportunity for a commercial.
I don't know.
My last question is, where are you gonna store the old tires?
So there's companies that'll take them, but if not, then the customer would just have to take the tire. But we can charge a fee and we can get rid of the tire. There's different companies that take them. It's like $15, $20 each tire to have it removed.
Well, I was more concerned about where are you gonna store the old tires in the meantime?
I mean, same thing, I could put it in the storage unit for now until they get picked up.
Okay. No, because again, you're right on that cusp of the 100-foot.
Right.
Old parts, carburetors, gas tanks, what happens to those?
Oh, you're asking about old tanks and...
Yeah, what happens? You gotta replace somebody's gas tank, carburetor, you know, somebody's engine. What happens to...
You think they just would get recycled, right?
Yeah, all the old stuff usually either gets brought to the scrapyard, or again, the old parts get given to the customer, and that's on them to get rid of them.
But until the scrapyard comes and takes them, where are they stored? That's, that's our concern.
They could be put in like a disposal bin, same thing, like a 5-gallon drum.
Okay.
Put one or somewhere until they're picked up or...
We do, my concern is really, because the dumpster pad is inside the 100-foot zone, and that, that raises concerns, because, and we're, we're gonna arrange a site walk, too, so probably most of our concerns will be alleviated in that sense there.
Right. Jamie was very clear about the dumpster use, that it's gonna be specifically for trash only.
Yes, okay. That was my concern.
Not in the dumpster.
Yeah, that was my concern.
This camera's on the property, too. It's all, I mean, I don't wanna...
And the way his unit is done inside, speaking of like, say he takes a carburetor off a motorcycle and it's no good, the customer got a new one, and he's got a spot for it. The back where the garage door is, everything folds in like an envelope to the drain. And then the rest of the unit going forward all pitches to it. So if anything ever did hit the floor, it would be coming, and if, it's actually kind of like a problem in the winter, because the way I designed it is, snow, as you come in, it comes from the door backwards, you know what I mean? So it's very protected, and it took me a year with the, you know, going through all the process of the plan and for the site review, you know? So I think it's in a really good position for if anything ever dropped on the floor, you know? The dumpster is really there just for cardboard and, you know, people having lunch, stuff like that. I don't, you know, that's what it's there for. And then the rest of the public seems to use it.
Uh huh.
And when you ask them, they go, "What's the problem?"
Yeah.
They do it with confidence, you know?
Right.
Mr. Chair?
Please.
What do you, what do you got for ventilation in there?
Ventilation?
Yes.
Um, really, just a typical garage bay. It's just, it's got a hot air, Modine heater, and then you just got your garage door and your pass door.
Well, yeah, so like during the winter, it's all closed, so if you're firing up a bike, a snowmobile, all that happening on our side, you need a ventilation.
Open the door.
Yeah, I don't think he's gonna be doing that.
You need ventilation in there. I work at a dealership, we have to have ventilation, you know?
Yeah.
Doesn't matter if the garage doors are open or not.
All right. Any more questions from the board? Can we arrange a site walk Friday at noon? Good for anybody?
I won't be here.
You won't, you won't be here?
I won't be here.
Oh, that's right, you're Friday till Tuesday.
I already had a plan to do it.
Next Wednesday?
If that's an issue, I'll cover it.
Sound good to you?
You know what I mean?
I can do my best.
I can't do noon time, but I'll go anytime that's available.
We could do evening if you want.
What about Thursday at like 5 o'clock?
Thursday at 5? I can do that.
Thursday at 5, I can do.
I can do.
Excellent. Is that all right with you, gentlemen?
Whatever works for you. I'm just trying to help them through the process, so whatever works for you guys, really.
So if Thursday at 5 o'clock, we'll come do a site walk, just check the place out, that sounds good to you, then we'll, we'll set it down in stone.
This Thursday or next?
This Thursday.
This Thursday? I'm on call, but should...
Oh, this Thursday?
What time?
5:00.
Oh, I'm leaving.
All right.
I'm leaving before, I thought it was next Thursday.
Next Thursday.
That's what I thought you were talking about, next Thursday.
Is next Thursday acceptable?
Because I told you.
Okay, so he...
Because I said I'm leaving Thursday. I'd have to work.
But is he in there working already?
Well, he can't be working...
No. No, he's just paying for an empty bay.
And he's, he's already...
I hate putting him off until next Thursday.
Well, he gets off till the next meeting anyways, because...
Okay.
Unless he's gonna do it tomorrow night.
If we're doing a site walk, we can't...
I know, he's, he...
I understand, because he's, he's already been paying for 60 days, and he seems to be pretty well organized, so...
Martha's Vineyard tomorrow.
Do you think this will, Chair, go through, this will be a two meeting for this?
Yeah.
It will be, okay, yeah. We were confused on that last, and just based on the last time, it was just about one meeting, and, which is fine, you guys control this. I just, we weren't aware of that. You mentioned that we gotta go in front of the selectmen, and...
Yeah.
Nobody said that to us, and we didn't do that the last time, so I was hoping to maybe get some clarification.
Okay. Well, you'll have to get that through the selectmen's office, because under, under the zoning, not the zoning bylaws, the bylaws of the town of Carver, section 8.5, you're a commercial garage, because you do repairs on motorized vehicles. And they are the ones that provide the license. We just provide the usage, the ability for you to use that, but they're the ones that ultimately provide the license for you for that.
Yep. Okay. Yep.
Not even bring him in front of the board.
Well, they'll have to vote on it, so...
Maybe that's what it was, maybe...
Well, it, the, the... Right. I, I don't know. Chances are, they closed up at 7, but it wouldn't hurt to knock on the door. But give them a call in the morning, and we'll see if we can get this all wrapped up by the time our next meeting and your, and their next meeting roll around, so...
No problem.
All right. Now, this is a public hearing. Is there anybody in the audience that would care to speak in regards to this? I don't see anybody. So thank you, gentlemen, very much. It was well put together and well presented, and thank you again.
We appreciate it. Thank you.
Oh, gentlemen, I just wanted to make sure that next Thursday, a week from, 10 days from now?
10 days.
That at 5 o'clock would be all right with you, gentlemen?
Yep.
Excellent. Again, thank you very much.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
It was a cliff.
Good job.
Today's the 23rd, so that's gonna be, three days, that's September 1st to...
1st or 2nd?
June 1st.
June 1st.
Yes, faster, faster than me. All right. Our next order of business this evening is preliminary subdivision plan, Wankinko 0 and 46 Federal Road, assessors map 131, lots 2-4 and 4-3 in an industrial A district. If you could...
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For the record, Bob Rogers with GAF Engineering on behalf of the applicant.
We haven't had anything back from Fuss O'Neil at this time, so... Well, we will undo a site walk on your site, too, but there might be some, some questions the board might have in regards to this, but I believe you had an ANOI done already on this property, or an ORAD?
That's correct, sir. Yes, briefly, you know, so this is a very similar plan that was, as was submitted last year. I think this, this plan creates four lots. We may have had three. Similar to last year, it was submitted before town meeting as a freeze plan. We would be following this up, you know, within seven months from the date of filing this Form B with a, with a definitive. And since we had already done the definitive the last time, you know, we're in good shape to, to do that, assuming that that's what the, uh, the owner and applicant would like us to do.
And this is an industrial zone, correct?
So the, the proposed roadway is in the industrial zone, uh, so, but, um, you know, we're also reconfiguring the lot to the north, which is in residential agricultural. So there is a delineation on the plans. You'll probably see it best on the, um, overview plan. Uh, but southern portion of the property is in industrial A and that's where the proposed roadway is located.
And, all right, so.
So we've set up the layout and the roadway in accordance with, uh, the board's industrial road requirements, uh, even though it's, it's just a short, a short dead end road before we split off with the individual driveways for the lots.
So, I'm, I'm seeing three lots. You said four?
Yeah, it's, um, just a decision that was made, um, the, you know, the lot to the north is, is lot 2-4 at, at present, which, um.
2-4D?
Yeah, I'm trying to see what we have for an existing conditions. This is, I mean, it could have been labeled as remaining land of lot 2-4. Um, we chose to designate it as, um, I think lot 2-4D.
2-4D, yep.
Yeah, so we've got A, B, C, D, the, currently it's lot 2-4 and lot 4-3.
Now, I see there's a paved soil mixing pad. How will that be accessed?
Uh, excuse me?
Uh, I see there's a paved soil mixing pad on lot 2-4D. Uh, how, how will be that, that, how will that be accessed?
2-4D, the, the lot to the north?
Yeah.
Uh, looks like there's, um, nu, so it's not gonna be accessed at all from, from the new subdivision roadway. It would be utilizing current means of access. Um, so again, um, we've got a certain configuration, you know, it could have been, um, done differently. But, you know, I know the only thing that's gonna happen on lot 2-4D, uh, which we had already filed, uh, some cranberry bog and earth removal plans. I believe we filed those, uh, either earlier this week or, or last week. There's been a number of cranberry bog expansion plans over the years for that piece that's to the, well, between federal road and the existing cranberry bogs. Um, you know, we've permitted cranberry bogs there multiple times. Uh, we just filed the plans as an earth removal permit and I've got to finish the notice of intent and file that with conservation. But, so there, there isn't any desire or necessity to access that land from the proposed subdivision roadway.
Is there an access currently for this, um, mixing pad?
I wanna see exactly where that mixing pad is.
It's, it's directly behind Ocean Spray Cranberry Company.
Oh, yes, yes, right. Yes, paved soil mixing pad. And, um, so I, I see the access to that presently and, and still available in the future as, uh, from the north. You know, it's probably multiple access points, but I, it seems to me, not having visited the site, that the primary access is, is from the north. But, you know, so in accordance with subdivision rules and regs, we're, we're simply showing, um, the driveway locations, the, you know, coming off of the proposed street. I could certainly find out more information about that.
I expect big trucks are using, using, accessing that? I, I just, I just don't see any access route in regards to it. I, I'm not.
Yeah, it's there. Um, I, I don't have a full knowledge of its, uh, amount of use or, or the access.
Three, second page. Pretty sure they're coming in from the top and down. I don't have that. It appears here. Oh, yours is, mine is green.
Yours is prettier.
Okay, this, this, all right, cause I see wetland, 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 and wetlands. We, we would like to see a more clear information on the access to that pad, cause it. But I, I can't tell from here. But it would have to be through federal road or cranberry road?
Yeah, where the, where our proposed road is going is all wooded, so where's, whatever the primary access to that area is, um, we're certainly not, not impacting it physically. But I can, I can ask the question.
Yeah, and, and we'd like to, uh, arrange a site walk for this. Uh, questions from the board? Uh, we'll talk to Andy Glynn's about observation pits. What I'm looking at, at this is, and you can correct me if I'm wrong. It doesn't appear that the sidewalk goes all the way around, or am I misreading the plans?
There's nothing there. So we'd be cutting that and making.
Uh, I think you're correct. So, so there's a sidewalk that, uh, is on the south side of the road and it wraps all the way around the cul-de-sac and it basically terminates at a crosswalk, um. You know, we're, uh, trying to comply, we don't wanna ask for a waiver from sidewalks, uh, the, you know, in practicality, um, uh, you know, federal road is, is not very safe to walk on, but, but, so you're, you're correct in saying that it does not, um, on both sides of the road, connect to federal road.
Was, was there any, any reason?
Um, just to, you know, comply with a, you know, a reasonable limitation on pavement. Um, you know, it's, it's intended as an industrial subdivision, not as a residential subdivision. Uh, I would say again that, that federal road is, isn't suitable to safely walk.
Right.
But, um, and, you know, uh, I'm just trying to see if there's anything else over there. It's not, it's not because of grading or it's, it's not that we, we could certainly provide it if, if the board wanted to.
Um, well, are you gonna be putting in a visible crosswalk at, at that point?
Um, if, there is a, um, a wheelchair ramp with a detectable warning panel. Um, I, if, if there was a desire to paint, uh, just to paint a crosswalk, we could certainly add that.
Right, well, if you're, if you're not gonna continue all the way down, then I, I would certainly suggest a, a, a crosswalk in, in that, in that area, because specifically it's identified as a wheelchair ramp.
Office workers taking a walk at length.
Yeah, the office workers will be a long way away, I understood. A loop around the bogs.
I see if it, oh, no, go ahead, please, be my guest.
Um, parcel A, what is that about?
So parcel A is, I think, the dedicated drainage lot, that there's a requirement that it, the drainage, uh, facility not be located in an easement, but be located on its own parcel.
Oh, okay.
So it's, you can see on, I guess, sheet eight, that it's encompassing the infiltration basin.
I see a phase one site assessment was done?
Ah, yeah, yeah.
Got a, a note somewhere on the frame?
Um.
I'm not familiar with it.
Oh, it's, uh, it's in the packet on the last two pages, uh, Mass DEP Bureau of Waste Site Cleanup, Phase One Site Assessment.
Oh, so I don't believe that a site assessment was done. I believe I accessed that data to show the presence or absence of vernal pools.
Okay, all right.
And so that, and it's just, it's a strange thing, but it's one of the better resources for looking at vernal pools and, and rare species habitat, particularly the vernal pools. Um, and a lot of times I know darn well there's been a fuel spill on a site and it isn't identified on that type of map for whatever reason, but, but that was the purpose of the inclusion.
Okay. All right, um. Questions from the board? I think we'll probably have more after we receive our Fussin' O'Neill's report.
Certainly. And, uh, well, if you wanna decide now or later on the, a date and time for the site walk, you, we can find out.
Yeah, we'll, we'll do that. We'll do that now. We'll come take a look at it. And that way, if we have questions or concerns, we can raise them to Fussin' O'Neill and, and it's not a more drawn out or complex project than would otherwise be required. Um, so next Thursday at five's already taken, so, uh, do I have any suggestions from the board in regards to a site walk for this? I don't believe we have a meeting next Tuesday at five o'clock.
I'm available next Tuesday at five.
Would you be available?
Me? But next Tuesday, yeah.
Think I can, all right. Uh, Mr. Robertson, would next Tuesday at five o'clock be all right with you?
That would be fine. I, um, I just, I think need to figure out what's a, uh, safe place to meet a, as far as parking and gathering and, um, you know, I know that obviously the focus is for the road and, and that location, but, uh, where it's all wooded, I guess, I don't have the answer at the moment. I know there's a, uh, like a residential type structure at 46 Federal Road, which is a long way from where our proposed road construction is.
Yeah.
You know, and, and, um, there's that solar site on the other side of federal road. I don't know how close it is. I guess if, with your permission, I could coordinate a meeting spot with Mr. Bott.
If, if, yeah, if, that would be great.
And that's, and that's, that would be Tuesday?
No.
At, next Tuesday or the, the following week?
I don't know when he comes back. I was not notified.
Yeah, um. Michelle wasn't sure if it was Tuesday or Wednesday next week.
Okay.
But you're talking about two weeks.
I think we should do it in two weeks then, if that's all right with you.
Sure, yep.
Uh, but then we'll have a meeting on that Tuesday night, so it would have to be a different. What about a week?
So you're gonna have a meeting without a site walk?
What about, uh, a week from Friday? Tom will be back by then and it'll be before our next meeting.
So the second?
The second, I believe, yep.
So one Thursday and one Friday?
Yeah. I want, I would prefer the Friday be at noon time, if that's acceptable.
I can't do noon time.
Ah, that's great.
I can't guarantee you.
Yeah, I'd really do you good.
I can't.
Lunchtime and federal furnace are really tight for me.
Okay.
Especially that, this bigger project, you know?
Um.
I don't know how much you wanna go get into walking around there, you know?
Right, so we have next.
Do some time consuming for lunchtime for me, so.
Yep.
Federal furnace is hard.
Monday at five, a week, mi, a Monday and fourteen, almost thirteen days?
Anything in the evenings, fine with me. I, no problem.
I'm good. In thirteen days at five o'clock on Monday?
What day in the week is that?
Monday.
It'll be the fifth?
I'm, I'm gonna be working.
The fifth?
Two, three, four, uh, the sixth? I think the sixth.
I, I'm, I'm not sure if we have a meeting on the sixth. I thought we did.
Well, my thi, I thought Monday was the sixth. I didn't bring my phone, so I don't have a calendar, but, um, Wednesday's the first.
No, Thursday's the first.
Thursday's the second.
Thursday's the first, so the fifth?
Yeah, see, the fifth. And, uh.
Um, but you, you can't make it on which days, Alan?
Mondays and Fridays.
So it's, it's gonna have to be a Tuesday, Wednesday, or Thursday? Well, it's, it's, it doesn't get dark till late, so, uh, I know you work late on Wednesdays.
I get out at six.
You get out at six? And we don't know if Tom Bott's gonna be back and we need to give him a little time.
We don't know.
You wanna hold off on that? Wait till he gets back and figure it out.
I think we, we kinda have to wait. We shouldn't. So can we tentatively set it? We'll tentatively set it for two weeks.
So we wouldn't see this, we wouldn't see this for two weeks, though.
Well, if we did it.
I don't think we have our meeting on the sixth.
I, I didn't think so. I, I would have thought.
We'd have our meeting on the thirteenth.
I thought so.
I thought it was second and fourth.
Right, yeah, I was, I was just gonna say, the sixth is the first Tuesday of the month, so we wouldn't have.
So we'll tentatively set it for Tuesday, the sixth, at five o'clock and, and we'll work with Mr. Robert, uh, Robertson and Mr. Bott to, uh, to square it away. At five o'clock, yeah.
Tuesday at five.
Yeah.
Thursday at five.
It's, it, it, it's going to be in, in the opposite, it's going to be.
No, except Tuesday at five.
Yeah.
Then Thursday at five. For the other place.
So June 1st at five?
The, the other place is gonna be on June 1st and then this one will be on June 6th.
Oh, so it's first and, uh, that's fine, yeah.
Okay, all right. Is that okay with you?
Yes, sir.
All right, but, and it's only tentative, um, we'll leave it to, to you and Mr. Bott to square it away. If it works out for you guys, then, then that's great.
Yes, okay, um, is there a, does, should we, I'm not sure if we marked out the road. I know we, you know, did the test pits and so there's gotta be some trail in. I don't know if you want me to, you know, say, mark out the beginning and where the cul-de-sac is or, you know? Would that be appropriate?
Cause you're saying it's, it's totally wooded at this, at this time.
Well, it is, uh, yeah. Wants us to have the cul-de-sac marked.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's how it's been in the past.
Uh, yeah, the beginning, the width, and a rough idea of, of where it goes around.
Sure, okay.
Excellent.
I'll do my best.
What if he doesn't get it done, so why don't you, uh?
If, if he doesn't get it done, he can, he can cancel it and we can, we can reschedule it.
Okay.
So.
Yeah, we, like you say, we've been in there, there, you can see the test pit logs and the test pit locations on the plan, so.
Okay.
It's accessible enough for, for us to, you know, whether it's flagging or bean poles, it's certainly not gonna be, you know, construction level, uh, layout.
Right, right, no, 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 just, we just need a general idea.
Yes, yep.
All right. Well, we appreciate your time tonight. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Have a good night.
Take care.
Our next order of business is a preliminary subdivision plan for Johnson Brothers Cranberries off Fosdick Road, assessors map 57, lot 1 and 2A, map 58, lot 2 and 8, in a residential agricultural district. And a continuance has been requested till, well, 6:13, as we were just discussing. All right, now, I see a very fine and intelligent looking audience here tonight and it has piqued my curiosity as, as our business of the evening has mostly concluded. Oh, could I ask, is, is there anybody here that wants to tell us, speak or tell me, or do you guys have any questions about what's going on? Are you here to study us or? Please, come on, come on forward. We're, we're super friendly. It might not look that way if, if you're asking for something, but.
Um, I didn't really understand the second thing, the motocross guy, what was going on there?
Okay, um, because it is in, and, and we can't, because this is an open case, we can't talk about the, the merits of something, but because it, he repairs vehicles and there's a lot of chemicals, oils, gasoline, and various other issues, along with safety issues, as, as we talked about with the ventilation, it, it undergoes a much deeper scrutiny because it requires a special permit and special permits are not entirely in accordance with our bylaws, so they, they require for us to give a special permit. We're gonna have to decide, are the benefits of this project beneficial to the town? Or is it detrimental to the town? If, if we found out it was in the middle of a cranberry bog where he wants to, to do something like this, um, it would be a detriment to the town because of the dangers posed by this particular type of business. Now, because it's going on in a, in a business district and it's on a main road with an already established structure, um, it, it has a certain level of, uh, benefits to it as being an appropriate location and an appropriate use of that location. But our big. But our biggest job up here is to make sure that people are safe, that the health and safety of everybody to the best of our ability, because we're just moms, dads, working people that are trying to make sure that we don't put something where it would be inappropriate or cause damage or harm, not only to other people or the environment. So that gentleman, he's experienced in the business. The particular site he picked is appropriate. Now, we will go and look at the facilities on a sidewalk and make sure that the facilities meet our expectations. And if they don't, we will set an order of conditions that have to be met to bring that standard up, where people are going to be safe. Exhaust for motor vehicles, carbon dioxide. You're probably all familiar. You probably have a carbon dioxide in your home because you have...
Monoxide.
A carbon monoxide, because you have a fuel-burning system in your house to heat your house in the winter. Because he will have vehicles running and creating carbon monoxide, we want to make sure that all of that dangerous gas is expelled, and he is not in danger. Because if he's there working alone, and an issue happens, and that that's a problem, and he looked like a family man, so it would be, it would be a very... It could be disastrous in that case. And we can't cover all the bases, because, again, we're just average, ordinary people like you guys. We just, none of us had, like, took classes or training to do this job. We felt that we could protect the community in the best interests of the community. So he underwent a little more scrutiny. When it comes to subdivisions, as you saw, the state has put together what they call a comprehensive subdivision plan that's supposed to cover every aspect of it. But as we know, when you're on one side of the street or the other side of the street, the land is going to be different. And so different aspects fall on us to address that. But in general, it's a far less rigorous process because it has been already outlined and put down on paper by the state.
All right, thank you.
No, I appreciate it. Thank you very much for asking a question. Does anybody else have any other questions? Come on, you guys are going to be up here someday, maybe?
Do you have to write about this when you get back?
Yeah, we're supposed to...
Oh, okay. Well...
Is there anybody here that's a member of the track team? As I was at Edge of Meat a while back in the pouring, wet rain, cold... My granddads were from Mashpee. They came in second and last, I think, in a couple of events, so no competition, but it was fun to see the track team.
Well, we really do appreciate you coming here and learning. When you're 18, you can run for this position, and you'll have just as much experience as most of us did when we took this position. Again, it's all about the health and safety and welfare of the town. And we try and take the bigger and smaller picture into play, which is why the gentleman, the first gentleman with the motocross, was a special permit, so that's a public hearing. So that allows everybody to come and speak. So you might just be a neighbor, or you might be concerned about impacts to the wetlands. And this gives you them the forum to speak. And we give as much weight to everybody that comes up and asks questions or speaks as we do to anybody else. So if Walmart comes on in here, they're going to stand on the scale and be level with anybody else that sits in that chair. We make it fair, and if anything, we try and lean towards the residents of the town because that's the people who have to live with the decisions we make. All right.
If I may?
Please.
Not sure if you guys, if you're aware of what, kind of what the planning board is. Planning Board deals zoning. Basically, we do the projects. People want to build something, they come before us. If you want to operate something, you go see the Select Board and get your license to operate your business there. But if you want to build a business, this is where you start. That's essentially what, that's essentially what we are here.
If we were a corporation, we'd be the engineering side, and they would be the financial side, more or less. All right.
Just to make it easy.
Our next order of business is, Michelle, well, Planning Board members' notes, Town Planner notes, we'll get to that in a second. Minutes of 3/28/2023. We added in all of the information that was presented to us. And...
She did as an addendum?
Yes, but it'll be done as part of the minutes going forward. So the Chair will accept a motion to approve the addendum to the minutes of 3/28/2023.
So moved.
Motion made by Mr. Gatske and seconded by Ms. Sardillo. Discussion? Seeing none. Mr. Deion?
Mr. Deion says aye.
John Gatske says aye.
Kevin Robinson says aye.
Helen Sardillo says aye.
And Mr. Shea says aye. All right. Before we close the meeting, typically we give board members a chance to express themselves. In this particular instance, and I'm not a very good public speaker, kudos to your teachers because they get up in front of you guys and talk off the top of their heads. But the town of Carver lost one of its very special residents last week. Shane McCollgan. One of the best of us. He was brave, strong, and had heart of gold. I'll miss him.
Did any of you know Shane?
I'll miss him terribly. All right. The Chair will accept a motion for an adjournment.
So moved.
Motion made by Ms. Sardillo. Seconded by...
Second.
Mr. Gatske. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you all very much, and you have a good evening.